The recording, John. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Will the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, February 2nd, 2022, please come to order? This evening's meeting will be a virtual planning and zoning meeting hosted by Zoom. During this meeting, our procedures will be as follows. One, when you first enter the meeting, you will be in the virtual waiting room until the meeting host admits you. Two, please be aware that your camera, if you have one, in your microphone will be muted by the meeting host when you enter the meeting. You can turn on your camera at any time, so you can be seen by others when and if you choose to. In order to run an efficient and orderly meeting in this virtual environment, unless stated otherwise by the meeting chairman during the meeting, the meeting host will keep everyone other than the commission members muted. You will still be able to hear everything said by the commission members, even if you are muted and your camera is not on. There will be the opportunity for public comment during public hearings, at which time, public participants will be unmuted. The secretary will read the legal call of the meeting as published according to Governor Lamont's executive order. During the public hearing, the applicant will be invited to present the application explaining to the commission and others present what is being requested. The meeting host will share all related documents on the screen as needed. In addition, all applications and supporting materials for each application on the agenda are available through the public meeting calendar page on the town website, and also through a direct link on the planning and zoning page. Five comments of town agencies will be read for each application, if there are any, and there will be clarifying questions from commissioners. Then there will be the opportunity for clarifying questions from the audience. Please raise your hand to the Zoom platform and wait to be called on and unmuted. First, those wish to support the application may come forward. Second, those who oppose the application will then come forward. As this is a public hearing, it must be recorded. It is necessary for speakers to identify themselves each time they speak by stating their name and address. The applicant, seven, the applicant will then have the opportunity to address any questions or concerns raised by the public or commissioners. Eight, once the public hearing is closed, the applicant is free to leave or remain for the balance of the public hearing and the regular meeting, during which the commission will try to reach a decision on each application. Each applicant will be notified in writing as the decision of this commission and has the right to appeal to Superior Court if desired. Nine, this meeting are available the day after the meeting by calling Planning and Zoning Department at 203-453-8039, or by emailing planning.zoning@ci.gilfordct.us after 9:00 a.m. All actions taken by the commission will be on a roll call vote. All commissioners and staff will identify themselves to the record before speaking. Seat of this evening are the following, and I would ask you to raise your hand and say hello. Sean Cosgrove.
Hello.
Jamie Stein.
Good evening.
Alan Brown.
Yes.
Richard Wallace.
Good evening.
Scott Edmund.
Hello.
Our newest member, Kevin Clark.
Hello.
And I'm Phil Johnson.
Hi Phil, I'm here.
Hey Frank, 7:30 and 30, good for you, my friend. And Frank DeAndrea, I put a check next to your name too. Thank you. Seat of this evening are not George Call. George retired last week. We have John Gassowski. Did I do better with it that time?
That was just fine, thanks. Hi, everybody.
Lisa Piam. So John is our interim town planner and interim acting zoning enforcement officer. Lisa Piambino is our planning and zoning administrative assistant. The meeting will be recorded via the Zoom platform and made available on the town website for viewing. The secretary will now read the legal notes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Notice is hereby given that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on February 2nd, 2022. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting will be conducted through a web and phone meeting only. Attendees are advised to not go to the regular community center location because a physical meeting will not take place. See below line and information to Zoom meeting. The following applications will be heard. Ron DiGennaro Development and Construction, State Street, map 54, lot 5, zone MU-OS. Special permit for 25 residential units. Copies of these applications are available for inspection in the Planning and Zoning Office and on the town's website, At this hearing, persons may attend by either phone or web connection and shall be heard. All written correspondence shall be submitted to planning.zoning@ci.gilfordct.us. Documents are available at the Planning and Zoning Office, dial 203-453-8039 for assistance. Stayed at Guilford, Connecticut, this 11th day of January 2022. Phil Johnson, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Scott. Would someone like to make a motion to open?
So much.
Second.
Thank you. I'll call the vote. Sean Cosgrove.
Hi.
Frank DeAndrea.
Yes.
Jamie Stein.
Yes.
Alan Brown.
Yes.
Richard Wallace.
Yes.
Scott Edmund.
Yes.
Kevin Clark.
Aye.
And I will also vote to open. First item on our agenda, under public hearings, Ron DiGennaro, DiGennaro Development Construction, State Street, map 54, lot 5, zone MU-OS, special permit for 25 residential units. Is someone here to present on behalf of Ron DiGennaro and/or is Ron DiGennaro here?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Kevin Crusaden. I'm the attorney for Ron DiGennaro, DiGennaro Development. My office is at Lafayette Street in Milford, Connecticut. With me tonight is Ryan McAvoy from SLR Consulting, the engineers on the project. We will be starting the presentation this evening. As a brief, by way of brief background, this commission may recall that maybe six to nine months ago, we were in front of you for a zone text amendment for this zone that allowed, that would allow this residential, this type of residential use. The commission granted, approved that application, obviously. We've been through inland wetlands agency. We've received that approval. And it is for, this is a special permit application, obviously. This use is allowed by special permit. We will be going to the Design Review Committee Wednesday of next week, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. So we're going to give as much presentation as we can this evening. Our architect was not available. He had a conflict, so you know, any questions hopefully can be answered at the, at the next public hearing on later this month. So this lot in this configuration, has been in this configuration since at least the early 1960s. I'm not going to go into much further detail. I'm going to let Ryan McAvoy pick it up and highlight the the portions of the site plan application. Thank you.
Right. Ryan, before you proceed, do you have those plans in front of you and do you want to be able to share them?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Yes.
John, if you could shift over and make Ryan a co-host, he can then share those plans with everyone on a screen share?
All right, Ryan, you should be able to go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you very much. For the record, my name is Ryan McAvoy. I'm a licensed professional engineer, registered in the state of Connecticut with SLR Consulting. And I'm going to share my screen. Hopefully this works because, you know, sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't. Let me know if you can see.
That's right.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so the plan that you see in front of you is our existing conditions plan with an aerial background image of the property highlighted in yellow. This parcel owned by the Funicello Family Trust totals about 7.7 acres in size and is located in the MU-OS district. It is on the east side of State Street, with State Street being on the left side of the sheet or to the west of the property. North is up for reference. Abutting properties are state of Connecticut land associated with Interstate 95 to the north and northeast. Residential properties along State Street to the west and agricultural and vacant land to the south and to the southeast. The site is currently used for agricultural purposes. I believe primarily vegetables unless I'm mistaken. But perhaps the aerial tells the story that it is mostly cleared and used for agriculture. There are some wooded areas to the east along and north along the state of Connecticut property. And also on the, I'll call it the neck or the frontage of the property along State Street. But the vast majority of the site is currently used for agricultural purposes. It is very flat. The property is very flat with the topography ranging of a high in the, in the majority of the property, in the agricultural part of the property from 33 down to 27. So only six feet of grade change across this, this property. There's a little more topography as you get closer to State Street, but by and large, I would characterize the, the site as essentially flat. The soils on site are primarily sand and gravel, based on our soil testing that we performed in the property, with groundwater roughly on average about three feet below grade. Public water is available along State Street as well. In terms of our proposed site development plan, let's switch over to this. What we're, let me know if you can see this proposed conditions. Good, good, great. We're proposing to take access from the frontage of the property along State Street with a 22-foot wide driveway and sidewalk coming into the, call it the body of the property, where we'll have a loop road configuration serving 25 residential dwelling units. And these residential dwelling units will be configured in duplexes, triples, or single dwelling units. Each, each individual unit or dwelling unit will have two bedrooms. So the total number of units again is 25, total number of bedrooms is 50. The looped driveway is, is trying to take advantage to the extent possible of the flat topography with curbless roads, with the exception of the driveway coming in off state. Once we get into the body of the property, we're attempting to the extent possible to have curbless roads and vegetated swales alongside the road. We do have some curb sections in this area. It is 20 feet wide around the loop section. And each dwelling unit will have a two-car garage and adequate space between the garage and the road for two additional cars. So each unit will have the capacity to park as much as four, although we do provide some, some visitor spaces around, around the, the loop road itself. In terms of the, the, the property, other, other advantages that we're trying to seek here are vegetated buffers along the west side of the property, which will consist of Colorado spruces and white pines. We're looking to maintain vegetated areas along the state of Connecticut property to the north and, and east. And maintain the open, open, open agricultural nature of the property to the south, although we are going to be vegetating the, the property with, with essentially lawn and some interspersed ornamental trees and shade trees and things of that nature. In terms of zoning compliance, all of our units meet minimum setback requirements from residential properties and from side rear setbacks. We are quite a bit below the density that is, would be the maximum density allowed by your regulations, which is up to six units per acre. We're roughly three units per acre, so we're substantially below the, the maximum density allowed. In terms of stormwater management, we have the, the unique circumstance in this case by virtue of our proposed conditions that we're actually reducing the rate and volume of runoff from the site. Agricultural fields tend to, based on Tier 55 Army Corps of Engineering guidelines, generate more runoff than vegetated areas. So with the majority of our site becoming vegetated, where it is perhaps more exposed soil today, we will, we will have a reduction in the rate and volume of runoff. We are, however, providing for water quality enhancements from impervious surfaces. These enhancements will include capturing runoff in formal catch basins and directing them into a water quality basin for the northern portion of the site. The southern and eastern portions of the site, as I mentioned earlier, will take advantage of the flat topography and have vegetated roadside swales directing them overland to the water quality basin. And this water quality basin is sized to meet the minimum standards of the 2004 DEEP Water Quality Manual. We do expect that based on our elevations that we will get some infiltration into the underlying sand and gravel soils, although we do not need to rely on that for the purposes of stormwater reduction or stormwater renovation. And lastly, the discharge from the basins, from the water quality basin will come across the street and discharge through a level spreader outlet alongside existing, an existing wetlands pocket. In terms of septic design, we, hold on, bear with me. There we go. Each building, very hard to see, it's kind of a spaghetti diagram, but each building, either duplex, single unit, or triple, will be served by its own subsurface sewage disposal system, which primarily consists of 12 or 18-inch concrete leaching galleries. Our septic system layout meets the minimum standards for spread and size requirements from the Connecticut Public Health Code. And we do have documentation from your health department that our layout as shown is a feasible and is a feasible layout and that our site can support the, the septic systems as proposed. Generally speaking, in terms of other utilities, we are providing water, a looped water system through the property coming off of State Street and looping through the site. And this, this water main will have a fire hydrant, a couple of fire hydrants. And there is adequate pressure in the area to support firefighting purposes. Sediment erosion control, we, we have a detailed sediment control plan as part of this application. Again, given the fact that the site is almost that flat and many parts of the year it is exposed soils, we don't believe that there's a significant chance for, for sedimentation coming from this property. However, we do provide for temporary sediment traps, silt pits and hay bales upgrading of wetland areas and other commonly used features to limit the potential for any sedimentation down gradient. We have modified plans somewhat based on comments from your town engineer, which include some modifications to curbing and sidewalk locations, namely at the intersection of our driveway with State Street. And we've also demonstrated that we have adequate sightlines to meet your regulations in both directions from the property with a limited amount of clearing in the right of way, looking to the left or looking to the south. And, and, and a significant sightline looking to the north below the High 95 overpass. So that is a brief, very brief description of our proposed site conditions. I, obviously, as attorney, attorney mentioned, we do have to appear before the Design Review Committee next week, and we expect that there'll be questions from the commission and from the public that we'd like to potentially address tonight. And if we can't, we'd be happy to do so at the, at the following meeting. So with that, I guess I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Can you pop me back on as a co-host, John? You're still co-host. I didn't remove it.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
What are you looking to do?
I have a, I have just a quick question. So on the GIS, it has this kind of a little elbow on the property. Did that get annexed or is that not part of it?
The Funicello family owns several properties in this area. They own this.
This one here?
That one there. There's a, there's another sliver that they own in between the two properties. And then there is the 7.72-acre property that we're using as part of this application. The applicant has an agreement with the Funicellos to utilize the 7.72-acre property as part of this. I'm not quite sure why the assessor has that little sliver piece, which is its own separate deeded parcel included as part of the application.
I was just curious that, you know what, part of my due diligence on these is I try and take a peek at these things in advance, just so everyone also knows what we're looking at. This is a Google Earth image of the property itself. So it's, and correct me where I'm wrong. It's going to come in like this and then loop around like that, give or take.
Phil, this is Jamie. I don't, I don't think we went with you to Google Maps. We're still seeing the GIS map.
Oh, that's weird. Okay, my apologies.
I have a question.
Sure, go for it, Alan.
How many of these units, the parking for each one of these units, how many spaces do they have and where are they?
Okay, so let me, let me one second to answer that.
If I, if I recall your presentation, you said they have two internal garage spaces and then two additional in front of the garage if that were necessary. So up to four.
Up to four, yeah, up to four per unit. And, and there's also a, we have five additional visitor spaces on the site. So each unit will have four, as much as four parking spaces if needed, and then there's additional visitor spaces if required. So yeah, total of 105 parking spaces roughly.
Okay, the only other question I had was, I'm sure the fire department will look into it, but you said approximately where are those two hydrants going to be on your plan?
We have one located in the southwest corner of the site.
Can we see that? Can we see that, please?
Okay, let me see if I can share my screen. And would that be possible, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah. So we have one hydrant located in the north, shown here in blue, near building one, which is the northernmost unit, and we have another hydrant located here in the south near building 10.
Hey, thank you.
And there, and also there are hydrants on State Street as well. They're not shown. They're not shown on this plan, but there, there's additional hydrants.
Terrific. We actually have a map. We have a memo from our town engineer. Jamie, would you like to read that one in? Do you have access to that?
Sorry, Phil, I do not.
Sorry, okay. Go for it, Richard.
Oops, I just went over to Kevin McGee. To the Planning and Zoning Commission from Jan Epleziak, Town Engineer, dated February 1st, 2022. Reason State Street Residential Development, map 54, lot 5. While most of my comments were addressed with the revised plan recently submitted, there are corrections needed. Site distances to conform and connectivity issues for the commission to consider. The handicap ramp at the north side of the entrance driveway should be realigned toward the new handicap ramp at the south side of the entrance driveway. The new ramp should be set up to cross the new driveway only. The town will likely fill in the sidewalks to the south to connect into the existing sidewalk system and crosswalk to the south. The design engineer should con- should confirm that this is safe and adequate, is a safe and adequate intersection. Site distances for the new development driveway on State Street. The town's minimum site distance requirement is 300 feet for new driveways and more, more may be needed depending upon the 85th percentile speed for State Street. The revised plans do not provide a name for the private road serving the development. A road name should be part of the approval process through planning and zoning. For the commission's consideration per section 273-221, the regulations for mixed-use open space zone district for which this project is zoned and the transportation plan for the town, this area of town has been identified as an area of added roadways for improved traffic circulation. See page 17, map 2 of the transportation plan for ideas for improved connectivity. Staff did recommend to the developer early on to consider a town road right of way with possible future extension to other adjacent lands as they become available for development. The suggestion was not included in the layout of this development, thus eliminating property from future connectivity possibilities in the future. That was redundant. Other options for connectivity in this area may still exist to alleviate traffic pressure on existing intersections with Route 1 in the area per the transportation plan and regulations. If other lands need, if other lands to the south propose development or redevelopment. That's all I have is, Ryan, did you see this?
I did. Yes, yes, thank you. And we did provide Ms. Epleziak with a revised graphic showing our sightlines and, and modifications to the handicap ramps. And we did receive an email from Janice yesterday. I believe Lisa was on that as well as the interim town planner, where she responded with, "Thanks, Ryan. I thought we had discussed sightlines in the past. Glad it works out. You have addressed my comments with regard to that and the handicap ramps with the revised plans you emailed." She goes on to say, after we, we suggested that the name of the project could be the Village on State or Village at State with a road name of Village Circle. Janice goes on to say Village Circle would work if the commission agrees. We have other private roads called Village Walk and Village Victoria Drive and a town road, road called Village Pond Road. So I think that's something we may need to discuss with the applicant and with staff to see if there are other options available in terms of road name. And.
Yeah, go ahead. Ryan, this is, oh, Scott Edmund, could you pull up that diagram of the sightlines just so we can see it?
Sure.
As he's doing that, I would just ask, Jan, Lisa, did you get a copy? Were you copied in on those, that email correspondence?
Yes, and you have a copy of the plan.
I, okay, yeah, no, I do. I was copied in on the, on the email, but I just wanted to make sure you had it so for, for the record.
Yes, I do. I have it in the record.
Okay, great.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have copies of that.
Except we could just make a note of attaching those to the, to the minutes for this meeting. That would be helpful.
Yeah, yeah, would be great. And I do have several questions, but I'm going to wait for this, this answer.
So coming out from our driveway intersection, looking to the left with some minor clearing right in our corner of the property here and then in the right of way, we can see 300 feet to the left. And we can see quite a bit more than that, but roughly, I think we, we could see at least 500, 600 feet looking to the right. And to the left, we could actually see a little bit further than what we show, but I didn't want to show the sightline going beyond or into the properties of the neighbors, even though these neighboring properties in State Street both have open lawns. So you could see beyond what we show, but I didn't want to take credit for for sightlines over, over privately owned properties.
Does this take, take into account the elevation change as you go underneath the highway and then go directly up?
Yes, yeah. So this, this is, this is based on, based on site, site reconnaissance. So there, there, there's, there's no, there's no vertical obstructions for at least 300 feet, probably, I think, I think we measured, I don't have to figure it with me, but as much as 500 feet looking to the right underneath the highway.
Can you, can you explain to me the comment? What is the 81st percentile speed for State Street?
The 85th percentile speed is a statistical average of the statistical number based on the prevailing speeds that are on site over the course of a given day. So it's really like.
How fast do people really go on State Street?
How fast do people really go? Exactly. So, so that, that's, that's a good way of putting it. So our, our plan reflects the, the, the minimum requirements that you have in your regulations with respect to new driveway intersections of 300 feet. So that's what we're able to provide without, without showing the sightline beyond a property line. You know, any, any further distance down, we, we can achieve just simply by the fact that again, these properties to the south are open lawns. So we can, there's no vertical obstructions in the roads, so we can see farther than what we show. But again, I don't, I don't want to, since we don't have control over that property, we are limited by the horizontal alignment of the road itself.
Okay, and Ryan, this is Scott again, one, one additional question or two. You, can you confirm that you revised the handicap ramps that she requested to do? And then the second is, it's not really marked, so I want to, can we assume that the, your curves and your sizes of roads allow for everything the fire department needs?
Yes, we can. Actually, you know, part of this is some items get lost between our wetland submissions and planning submissions, but we did provide graphics to Janice during the wetlands review of fire truck turning template movements around the site. I don't believe, we must not have included them in your packet, so we can, we'd be happy to share those.
Thank you. I have several questions. Ryan, did you see that each?
I, I have, I have several questions. Um, uh, Ryan, did you see that each unit, each dwelling has its own separate septic system?
Each building.
Each building.
Each building, yes.
Is, is this, so is there an association associated with this, or, I mean?
That, there will be an association, uh, and the association will be responsible for the maintenance of these systems. The public health code requires that every building be served by a septic system, not every dwelling. Uh, so I'm sure you've seen other multifamily developments in town where uh, where each building will have its own separate leaching field and septic tank, uh, which is, which is what we show on this particular plan.
So is this, so the association will be in charge of and be responsible for pumping schedule for those septic systems?
Generally speaking, yes, that, that's, that's the arrangement how these, these properties typically work.
Okay, and um my second question is, to the south of the property in the opens, the, the open area, um, is that gonna be grass?
It's gonna be primarily lawn, uh, what, what we're looking to achieve in there, because we do have a number of leaching fields and reserve areas, so we don't want to go too crazy with, with, with vegetation, tree planting. So it is gonna be mostly lawn areas, and will be some ornamental trees interspersed, uh, but primarily it'll be lawn.
Okay, and 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 the association will, you know, be in charge of mowing all that area.
That's correct.
Okay, and my final question is, is there um that maybe there's something in the documentation for this project? Is there a performance? What I call a performance bond relative to the final landscaping? We've had some issues with some other um developers. Um, you know, uh, so the, you, you mentioned to the, to the, to the west vegetation, you know, barrier vegetation, that kind of thing. I can see it right now in front of me. Um, is there a bond that you are posting, is a developer posting, to make sure that that is actually done according to the specifications in your plans?
Uh, well, I typically bonding for landscaping is uh something that's requested or required by the commission. I don't know if your regulations require it, but uh, I, I'm sure the applicant would agree to, to post a bond for the um placement of those trees. Haven't had that discussion with them, but it's not a, it's not an unusual request.
It's, so, but the, the extent of landscaping relative to barriers, is it just to the west or is it also to the east?
It's just to the west, it, it's just to the west, because the west has a single-family residential homes. To the east is, is, is State of Connecticut, the highway. It's the highway, so.
And and is the, is the vegetation that you're suggesting for the west specified? Or are they, are they deciduous, or are they?
Oh, they're, they're spruces and 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 white pines, so they're all, they're, they're evergreens. It's an evergreen, it's an evergreen buffer.
Well, I was just up to the commit, commission based on our past experience in some instances that we consider a bond.
Yeah, and Ryan, let me explain, we, we've had issues in the past where developments had, have gone on much longer than anybody wanted them to go on and have been impactful upon neighbors without the, the landscaping that was proposed actually being installed for more than ten years. So we're trying to head off those problems on a going-forward basis.
Yeah, and Phil, I would actually add, this is Scott again, I would add that we would probably prefer that the buffer landscaping goes in as early as possible in the process as well. Just for it to take root and then to maintain, you know, to make sure it goes in as soon as possible.
But that would, Scott, Scott, that would, that would, that would not preclude a bond.
No, certainly not, certainly not. I agree with you completely, Sean. I'm just putting in that as that would be a preference on, by, uh, at least for me.
And I make, I make a quick, quick comment.
Yes, Frank, please.
So a few years back, I did a project um in Guilford. Not others are required to a landscape bond, but that bond was held by Guilford Savings Bank for three years, just to make sure my landscaping was in, and it actually took. And that was required by the town that time. So just throwing that out there, that it's, we've done it in the past and we can do it.
And we should do it.
God, uh, Ryan, can I just ask another question? Um, Janice made some comments about um, public, a public road access for future development to adjacent sites. Can you just quickly comment as to why that wasn't um uh, done and?
Oh, okay, go, I'm sorry.
Sorry, no, I, I, I'm kind of formulating the question as I go along, so hopefully I got the point across.
No, I, I think, I think this is something that, you know, I'd like to discuss a little, little more detail with staff, but I'm happy to give you some of the bullet points that I think are important to consider here. Um, firstly, uh, we do have, we, we've, we've left an opening here between uh some of our buildings for the purposes of allowing for the potential, potential of future property owned by the Funicello family uh, to perhaps connect into this site. So um, I'm going to show some GIS plans uh that I stole from your website. Um, if I find them. Hold on, it's, it's in here somewhere, hold on, here we go. Uh, so, so this is, this is uh straight off your, 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 your town website, and this is our property that we're seeking approval to develop on. And to the south, you have that strip that we talked about, owned by uh the Funicellos, and we have this larger piece of land uh down here, also owned by the Funicellos. And in between, you have this uh property owned by um, the Anderson family in some capacity, Anderson Real Estate, I believe it's called, and they have uh, also a property and house uh with access on State Street. And lastly, to the south is the uh Pinchbeck uh property. Yeah, I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with that. Uh, they have uh a couple of properties, one with the greenhouses and, and another property with access on State Street. And and to the south, we have uh Boston Post Road Route One. And I, I, I have a couple of different plans here that I think I just, you know, want to, want everyone to consider. The first of all is this is a, a map floodplain uh between the greenhouses and Boston Post Road. This hatch there, it's very extensive. Uh, very extensive floodplain areas. Um, and also, uh, I, you know, we didn't flag wetlands down this far, but uh, again, uh, this is your, your GIS with the wetland uh location shown between the greenhouses and Boston Post Road. So the, the reason why, why I bring this up is a couple of reasons. One, the Pinchbeck Farm has access to State Street. The Andersons have access to State Street, and the only property that's really, I guess you could call landlocked would be the Funicello's, and they do have an easement of access out to State Street, but it's only fifteen feet in width, and this, this easement goes back probably, you know, to farming days when all you needed was a, was a little path to get your, your tractor down or whatever, but um, regardless, the applicant uh has, in his agreement with the, with the Funicellos, the property owner, that he provides for potential access to connect um, for any development they may pursue in the future uh to this site. Now, the applicant's happy to provide that and he's contractually obligated to with, with, uh, with the Funicellos. Our, our concern is about potentially opening this, this up for some form of a uh, a town road. Uh, and the reason why that's a bit of a concern, first of all, again, going out to uh, Boston Post Road would, would really, I mean, create a very I would say a vastly different traffic pattern than what you have today. Uh, a theoretical road or hypothetical road to Boston Post Road would have to cross floodplain, would have to cross wetlands when involved as much as four property owners. And uh your regulations do allow for you to consider um perhaps different configurations when the impact on the development as we propose uh would be, you know, substantial. And I, I believe that what we're trying to provide in this site is sort of a uh, a quaint, quiet residential neighborhood. We've allowed for, we're going to allow for the possibility of Funicello family to possibly connect in a future development if it happens. Um, but the Pinchbacks and Andersons do have access out to State Street and having some sort of a uh, large through road coming through from Boston Post Road to State Street, I think would be, you know, I, 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 I'd say it's um.
I guess I don't, I di- I didn't read that much into Janice's um, e- into her memo um about going through the Pinchback property um and and
Well, she, she refers to, yeah, she refers to going out to Boston Post Road.
Okay, that, so that would, that's ultimately what she was getting at was
Got it.
That would mean, that would mean, that would be in a, a right-of-way somehow. And, you know, the other
Substantial.
Is, is that i- if the Funicello property to the south gets access to that access point in the roadway in the, your proposed property, that's gonna increase traffic depending upon what development might be considered. And that's something that the people in that development, you know, have to be aware of as, as a potential.
Agreed, agreed, but I, I think what, what we're hoping to not do is have a situation where every property through, through their funnels through the site. I, I think that would be, you know, that, that, and that goes to the, the language in your regulation, which I, I, I'd suggest gives you some discretion in this matter.
But what, what, what other, what other access or exit point would they have from the Funicello property? You just mentioned that the access point to their property is now only fifteen feet wide.
There, well, they'll, they'll, they'll have it, they'll have, they'll have the opportunity to access through, through this, a- as per their agreement with the applicant. And they also, uh, as I mentioned, out, out to, there's a, there's a, uh, basically a farm road, um.
But it's only, but it's only fifteen feet, but it's only fifteen feet wide, so.
Right, so they'll, they'll, but they'll have the, they'll have the building, and, you know, they're, 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 they obviously are, are well aware of this development and they're, you know, they, they signed on the application and they've reviewed our plans. Um, and, and, you know, it's my understanding, I haven't spoken with them directly, but the applicant has been dealing with them throughout, that um what we've provided, what we're going to provide them in terms of access through our development uh will, will, will be adequate for their needs.
Right, I'm just, I'm just thinking that the, the Funicello property to the south is gonna be devalued if the access to it is restricted, a- and that's what's gonna happen.
Well, it, it sounds like there, there's an agreement in place to allow access should it be requested. Is that accurate, Ryan?
I, I, I would, I would, I would characterize it as, it's, it's something that the applicant DeGeneres uh has to provide the Funicellos per their agreement, so.
Ryan, this, you know. Right, I'm sorry, this is Kevin Crusade, an attorney for the applicant. I, I think that the, uh, the, the, the agreement uh, for the easement to the Funicello piece, uh, is, it's wider than, than fifteen feet through uh this property. Um, it's, it's
I was, I was, I was talking about the, the, the access point to State Street to the west as opposed to going north through this proposed development.
Right, right, yes, sir. So, so that is fifteen feet, but I just wanted to make it clear that the, I think it's twenty or twenty-five feet is the proposed easement through through, through this piece. So
The, the prob- the problem with that is that it just increases traffic through the proposed development.
That, well, if there is, uh, if there is a proposed development from, from the right, I mean, that, that's assuming that there's, there's a, there's a future resident development or other development of that piece, that, that's not what's in front of the commission tonight. And I, I think that the um, the, the the Funicellos have made the decision to sell this piece with that easement and with the access uh, abilities that they, that they have, or, and that Mr. De- DeGeneres has agreed to, so.
Okay, I mean, I mean, it could be a headache down the road, but that's not gonna be my headache.
Hey, Phil.
Yes, Richard.
I gotta, I got a question. I don't know for the attorney or counselor, Ryan. Is this, is there plans that this is gonna become like a active community? There will be no things, no things like pools going in on the, on the other available land, clubhouses?
At this
Road before.
There, there's, Ryan, do you want to go to that, speak to that?
Yeah, there, there's no, there's no proposed community pools at this, at this point, no.
And, and there's no, there's no plans for the, for the future development of that other parcel.
And there'll be a homeowners' association you indicated?
Yes, no, they'll have to, yes.
Okay, correct.
Phil, this is Jamie. Uh, I have two questions. One is, um, I, I, if we could just get a little bit more clarification from Janice on what she was thinking, because I had a look at the transportation plan from two thousand and three, I think is the one she's referencing. And map number two, the map is very small. It does say that there should be a connector from State Street to Boston Post Road, but I'm I'm not understanding uh this conversation about where the road may potentially go or when it may service, so I'd just like some clarification.
Given, given that we um are still gonna have, we're gonna have to continue this to our next meeting. Um, perhaps we can ask Janice to provide some more clarity on that comment, uh, and maybe a bigger map.
Yeah, that'd be great. That'd be great.
And if, if I might, Mr. Chairman? Yes, just in, in a staff level meeting with Janice, when we were talking about this application, I, she was basically talking about um, you know, not, not having a specific plan to get from here to there, but really um, designing this not to foreclose the possibility of some sort of future connection. So it's, it's really that level of planning, and I think as um the applicant's engineer suggested, you know, providing for that width in between the two buildings in the um southwest corner of the loop. Um, that, you know, that, that you know, future, future connectivity might, might not be foreclosed, if obviously not certainly planned out at this point. Got it. So, so again, may, maybe we'll just ask uh Janice to provide some additional comments at our next meeting.
Right, maybe she should provide what with she's looking for, right?
Well, Mr. Mister Chairman, that's uh Attorney Crusade, and it just real briefly, and I know you want to move on from this point. Um, I speak with Ron DeGeneres today, and we had conversations with Ryan McAvoy, and if the, if it's, if um if the town engineer is looking for a fifty-foot-wide easement for something that may happen in the future where fifty-foot-wide easements would need to be acquired over three other parcels and floodplain, including floodplain in order to, to make a town road through the property. The, the regulation, and um I'll just say this, does allow the commission to balance the um I guess, the, the viability of that with the impact to the property and the, it, the direct impact to the property for a fifty-foot-wide easement that may never
Right.
Out is, is probably, it, it's, it's devastating project.
I, I hear what you're saying, and, and I think all the commission members appreciate that, what, you know, and I think what we're trying to do is just get to a spot where we're understanding what, you know, they're thinking about, especially given the fact that, you know, we have to have a second meeting, so if we can ask for some additional, now, I'm not saying we're going down that road. Um, but i- it, it's something we want to be educated about and understand. Even my, my gut tells me that's not something we would try and push for. Um, but I just want to be educated about that.
Thank you, thank you.
Certainly. Uh, any other questions from commissioners?
Yeah, Phil, I did, I did have a second question. I seem to remember, and I'm sorry if I'm misremembering, misremembering this application, but we saw you when we had the big meeting in the community center, didn't we? We had an in-person meeting, that's the last time we saw that application. Am I remembering this correctly?
For the, for the zone text amendment?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, what I'm getting, what I'm getting at is that I remember specifically that Ms. Shirley Gerioni read testimony about how this is a planned residential development which would entail a kind of community planning and design process. I don't have it at my fingertips, but I think, uh, you know, we as a commission should go back and maybe read that testimony, because my question to the applicant is um, uh, how, how have you um worked towards that recommendation, or have you uh, addressed any of that recommendation?
I will, I, I'm not familiar with that testimony, but I will look at it and, and be able to come back and speak to the commission on that, but this is not a planned residential development under the regulations. This is um a special permit application um pursuant to the zone tax change where originally this type of development was available to fifty-five and over community only, and the zone tax changed And the zone tax change made it available to conventional housing.
I remember that. I remember that about that meeting. I just could have sworn that there was a discussion about, um, anyways, I, I, I have to do my due diligence as well, but, but if you could, please, I, I do remember that discussion the last time we met.
Absolutely.
Um, if there aren't additional questions from commissioners, I'm gonna put, uh, it out to the public to, uh, ask questions of the applicant with respect to this application. As I've said before, um, the, we are waiting on comments from design review. Um, so we will be continuing this to the next meeting. Um, but if there are questions from the public, I encourage you to raise your hand so we can call on you. Uh, after that, we'll take comments for and against. So would anyone like to ask a question of the applicant? Again, if your camera's off.
Terry, you're muted. You were trying to speak.
Uh, if your camera's off and you're muted, it makes it really tough for us to hear you.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can. Thank you. Would you like to say your name and address for the record? That would be terrific.
Terry Rivas, Guilford Housing Authority, three ten State Street, Oferson Guilford. I'm the executive director and I'd ask, I'd like you to speak to the traffic on State Street a little bit. Um, we have, uh, thirty-two units of senior housing coupled with an organization in the back being GIV Guilford Interfaith Volunteers. And mainly in the back of the property, Charlie's Closet, who takes in donations of equipment, does repairs and then puts them back out in communities with that traffic coming and going. We do have some traffic concerns. In my years at Guilford Housing Authority, um, uh, being just over six, we have on the entrance to our driveway a retaining fabricated wall. It's been hit since twenty fifteen, uh, four times. The last time, you know, in retaining police reports for insurance claims and different things. It's my understanding that there was some sort of traffic study done on, uh, State Street with speed being uh, the greatest, uh, going up and down. And with twenty-five additional units coupled with coming and goings of our residents and Charlie's Closet, I'm concerned.
Well, one of the things I would point out is probably the, the people that are driving with the most speed and probably the ones that hit your wall were coming down State Street, would be my guess. So. You're entering fairly close to, you know, the front. You're, you're really not going to be developing, in my opinion, a ton of speed coming out of this development.
Okay.
I mean, I, I, again, uh, you know, I, I kind of know exactly what you're talking about. I, I donated and picked up things from Charlie's Closet. Um, but I, I really, I mean, volume might be, you know, an increase in volume might be one issue, but I, I would not be really concerned about the speed of people coming out of the development.
There, there has been, um, you know, we did a, um, a self kind of counting cars because the volume had picked up. Uh, some of the, the residents that had come in had had two vehicles. The comings and goings, the donations, the drop offs, the pickups of equipment has increased. It's a wonderful organization. Its name is very much out in state. So we have seen an increase, you know, directly because it's in the back of our property and part of that would be up State Street. So that's what, it wasn't just speed I was concerned with. It was volume along the uh, uh, bottom portion of State Street even where I think this night, uh, this evening, we spoke to access potential town roads in and stuff off of State, State Street. I just wondered if there had been any sort of, what documents were being used? Were they being looked at? Um, and, and that's why I brought it up.
So John, maybe you can help me and Kevin, um, or Ryan, have, has there been any type of a traffic study done with respect to um, the additional volume? But I, I would say that, you know, the, the addition of the Guilford Housing Authority and the Charlie's Closet added a lot of volume also.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
So, I mean, it, it's kind of like, you, it, in one hand, you can't complain about the volume when you're generating a lot of it yourself.
Mm-hmm. We are generating some of it, but it has, we've seen a steady increase ourselves. Um, so I, I know there's a, a much more in the past six years than there was initially. Um, and I just wondered what studies you were using and if you had addressed it. Are there?
I, I'd like to take that, Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Please.
Uh, so, so, you know, within reviewing your regulations, there's a, there's threshold limits for uh, when traffic studies or traffic impact analyses are required. And I believe your threshold for when that is required is when there's fifty units or more proposed. So we, we don't, we don't, we don't meet the threshold that would trigger the, the requirement for providing a traffic study. I can tell you that twenty-five uh, dwelling units is generally a fairly low, I don't know, um, I've got some, some feedback here, but, um, I, it's a fairly low generator of traffic, particularly during peak hours. I, I don't have the figures in front of me, but, but, but in, in our experience and, and reviewing uh, Institute of Transportation Engineers documentation and, and frankly proposing applications like this all over the state. Um, because of the variable nature of when residents come and go, uh, you tend to see very low peak hour impact on, 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 on the roadway system. Not that there's not going to be more traffic. Obviously, a farm generates next to nothing and we're going to be generating more. There's no, there's no question about that, but it's, it's very rarely impactful, uh, because we're talking, you know, probably in the order of ten, ten to fifteen peak, uh, uh, additional cars in the peak hour. Um, and, and again, it's, it's mostly dispersed throughout the day. So, um, we, we, we don't meet the threshold that would require it. Um, but if the commission is looking for any more information, I'd be happy to.
And Mr. Chairman, if I might.
Certainly, please.
So I, just the other thing that I would note is, is, uh, uh, one of, one of Ryan, uh, Mr. McAvoy's first comments was about the, the development density, um, which is actually half approximately of, of the allowable density for that development area. So when the commission basically zoned this area to be able to support a density that's essentially twice as high as being proposed, um, it essentially acknowledged that the local road system, um, could, could support density at that, at that level.
No. Okay. Um, if I could just continue, and I would ask John, um, you made reference to receiving the email from, uh, I sent it over to Planning and Zoning this, um, this afternoon. Um, is that something I speak to now? Or under this section or, uh, do I wait for the other opposed?
Well, we could, uh, yeah, we, I mean, it's, that's up to the chairman. Um, we can, we can certainly note it for the record. It's, it's a document that I just forwarded to Ryan McAvoy and, um, to, uh, the attorney who I can't see on my screen right now.
If, if you don't mind, because, uh, none of us have seen it or have access to it, and we do have a second meeting for this.
Okay.
Right. What I would ask is that, that be made available to commissioners for review. Uh, and if you would like to speak to that at the next meeting, we would welcome that.
Right. And I, and I, it would give, that, that would give an opportunity for the, the design engineer to, to respond, because it was a technical question about drainage, basically.
Yes.
And so it would, this would allow the engineer the time to respond, so we could perhaps resolve it before it even became a, a major issue.
Kind of well above our level.
Yeah, and we, we, we went to Waldo because, you know, uh, after looking at him, I, we realized, you know, a seventy-two page document on drainage. Um, I needed to, you know, uh, address it a different way. And, and we'll certainly attend the next meeting and be available for any questions.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Uh, are there any other uh, questions from the public with respect to this application? Uh, would anyone like to speak in favor of this application?
I have some questions.
Uh, uh, if you could state your name, Brendan, if you could state your name and address for the record, that would be terrific.
Brendan Maurer, twenty-three Woodruff Drive. Um, uh, so.
In Guilford?
Yes, in Guilford. Correct. Um, so the, um, a couple of questions about the site distance. Typically, I see site distance, uh, calculated fifteen feet back from the edge of pavement. And it looked like in your figure, you use ten feet, um, which I thought was kind of strange. And, um, it didn't sound like the eighty-fifth percentile, um, speed was addressed. Typically, site distance is calculated, um, taking speed into account. Um, so I'm not, not sure how that got resolved. Um, but I did notice in, um, it's actually in your watershed maps. It, it appeared that there were, um, site distance easements drawn in on the adjacent properties. Um, so it, it looked like at one point, um, you had calculated a site distance that was a lot, um, longer than what, what you're currently proposing. Um, so I, I share, I share the same concern about the driveway here. Um, there's a lot of traffic on this road. People come down that hill very fast. Um, there's a new development just on the other side of ninety-five adding traffic in. Um, so the, those, those things are, are strange to me. And I, I feel like with it being a special permit, the commission can, um, can ask for a traffic study regardless of what the fifty-unit threshold may be. Um, and I would encourage them to do so. It seems like a really prudent thing to do. Um, the other, the other question I had was on, um, your water quality basin. Typically, you want three feet from the bottom of that basin to the seasonally high water elevation. Um, and it looked like the closest test pit to your basin, um, was around elevation thirty. And the seasonally high water elevation was two feet below grade. Which would be around elevation twenty-eight, which would be six inches below the bottom of your water quality basin. So that, that would, um, kind of not meet the requirements of the DEP water quality manual. And the, um, I would say the, the reduction in peak flow rates, uh, by basically saying that the curve number of a row crop being extremely high. And changing that to open space being extremely low. Um, it, it's, it's a little, it's a little odd, uh, in my opinion. I'm not, I'm not sure what's out there now, but it looks, um, it looks like it would be more of a meadow type situation. Um, which, which does have a very low curve number, but, uh, essentially you're, you're taking entirely pervious parcel and not providing any detention whatsoever. Whi- which isn't, which isn't typical.
So I, I don't mean to kind of corner you on this. Can you help me consolidate the question for the applicant?
I think, I think I, I've got.
Okay. If you want to go, go. Thanks, Ryan.
Yeah. Okay. So, so with regard to the sightlines, again, we, we're following your regulations, which uh, require three hundred feet minimum. Uh, and, and we, we provide that at, at our location. Uh, and frankly, there's, there's no other option that we have on this property. There's no other, uh, frontage that we can, we can relocate to. It is, it is all that this property has. Um, and we're providing what your regulations require with respect to the minimum site distances. We've submitted that to your town engineer and she, in her email today confirmed that it meets, it meets the requirements. Uh, with respect to where the distance is taken from, the DOT has a range of, of distances that you can measure from the, the sightline from, and it's between ten and twenty feet. Uh, we, we took the, the lower end of that, uh, again, when a car pulls up to a stopped intersection or to a stop line, a stop sign, uh, location, uh, typically a car's driver eye being ten feet off the edge of pavement of State Street, uh, would not be an unreasonable spot or vantage point to, to, to pull up to, to turn left or right. So we are, we are taking advantage of the fact that it can go as low as ten feet. And I, and I, I do believe that um, that would still leave about, you know, several feet from the front of the car to the edge of State Street. So it's not an unreasonable um, vantage point for the site distance. In terms of water quality, uh, we, we are, we do have our water quality basin and Mr. Mauser was correct about the relationship between that water quality basin and groundwater. However, I think, um, uh, the, the three-foot separation to seasonal groundwater is a requirement when you are providing, um, a stormwater basin that is, that is, that is designed with infiltration in mind. So in other words, if we were, if we needed that basin for the purposes of stormwater detention or reducing runoff from our property, I would tend to agree with his, his comment that, that well, we don't have three feet between the bottom of our water quality basin and, 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 and the seasonal high ground one. But we're not seeking, uh, uh, the purp- the purpose of that, of that water quality basin is not to, uh, completely infiltrate, although we expect that it will, um, given the soil conditions. That basin, even if it has water in it, will still provide water quality enhancement and improvements in terms of thermal uh, reduction, reduction of temperature from asphalt surfaces, uh, sediment retention and other features that are associated with a water quality basin. So I do believe it meets, uh, the primary treatment practice, uh, as found in the DP water quality manual. And with respect to our analysis of the site conditions, um, and hydrology, uh, computations, um, we are utilizing, uh, standard engineering practices with, uh, you know, that have been laid out for decades by Army Corps of Engineers. Uh, these are the methodologies used by the DOT, the state DEP, um, local regulations throughout the state. Um, we're following that methodology and agricultural fields, uh, tend to have a much higher rate of runoff because often they're exposed soils, uh, and vegetated surfaces tend to slow the rate of travel through the runoff. You do have uh, uh, evaporation through the grass, through the vegetation that doesn't exist there today. Uh, so I'm comfortable and, um, that our analysis is, is correct. And uh, I would also, uh, refer you to comments from the town engineer who, uh, have confirmed that we've, we've essentially met her re- uh, requirements regarding storm drainage, uh, design.
Thank you, Brendan. Does that partially answer some of your questions? They might not be perfect, but.
No, the eighty-fifth percentile speed, um, it, it keeps getting avoided and.
Well, again, maybe we can do this. Um, John, can we ask, uh, Janice for some clarification on that in terms of what her concern was and what can be, h- h- how that should be appropriately addressed?
For, uh, site.
For our next meeting?
Yes.
I, I, I will do my best to get you an answer to that, because I, I mean, I brought up the question myself, because I didn't know what it was. So I will do my best to become more educated on this and, and have Janice, uh, help us do that, because they were her comments.
Uh, I would also, um, say that the, the three-foot separation from groundwater, um, is to allow for the filtering of pollutants from the stormwater before it reaches the groundwater. Um, so I, I, I don't, don't agree that it's not required. Um, also, it is the commission here, uh, somehow opposed to requesting a traffic study in the interest of safety for the town and people using this road.
I, I believe the commission will probably give it due consideration between now and our next meeting. Uh, but I don't believe we're prepared, given it's not within our regulations to impose it at this point. But.
It's a special permit.
And it's not required.
But you're allowed to ask for it.
Right. Right, but it's not required. So I, I, again, I will, I and the commission will give it due consideration. And we will ask the professionals with respect to that and, and address it at our next meeting.
Ryan also didn't address the apparent site distance easement on his watershed maps.
Now that the, the site distance is measured based on field conditions, we do have that graphic that's included as part of our application. Anything on a watershed map may have been old, old drafting exercise. And, and perhaps it's not what we're proposing. We don't believe any sightline easements required to achieve the minimum site distance required in your zoning regulations.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for this applicant? Would anyone like to speak in favor of this application? Again, we're going to have a second public hearing on this. So if you want to take time to think about it, we will give you the opportunity to speak again.
This isn't actually a public hearing yet, right? We're just asking questions. I didn't, I didn't actually remember hearing anyone say it was like that it officially started as a public hearing.
Seven thirty and fifteen seconds, I read the announcement that it was a public hearing.
Okay.
Would anyone like to speak in favor of this application? Would someone like to make a motion to continue this to our next meeting? Which is on February sixteenth. I heard Sean. Yes, Richard.
Due to the concerns about traffic, maybe we could have PD weigh in on this.
Sure, that'd be great.
And the question about fire engines turning around, just double check with the fire department.
Sure. Again, I think we can probably kick that to Janice. Is that an appropriate request?
Yeah.
Great. So John, if you could help us coordinate Janice's engagement on those two questions, that would be terrific. I heard Sean make a motion to move this to our next meeting to continue it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Frank, I'll call the vote. Sean Cosgrove.
Hi.
Frank DeAndrea.
Hi.
Jamie Stein.
Yes.
Alan Brown.
Yes.
Richard Wallace.
Yes.
Scott Edmund.
Yes.
Kevin Clark.
Hi.
And I shall also vote to continue this to our next meeting. Thank you very much. Next item on, we don't have another, we have to, we're going to request to continue Vigiliati Construction Residential Open Space Subdivision, Long Hill Estates, East Terramac Lane, map ninety-six one oh one, request to continue to two sixteen. Someone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Called a vote. Kevin Clark.
Hi.
Scott Edmund.
Yes.
Richard Wallace.
Yes.
Alan Brown.
Yes.
Jamie Stein.
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea.
I.
Sean Cosgrove.
I.
I shall also vote to continue that. We do have a we've been asked to act on Hubbard Road LLC, sorry. Would someone like to make a motion to close the public hearings?
So moved.
Second.
Like, you know. Sean Cosgrove.
Hi.
Frank DeAndrea.
Hi.
Jamie Stein.
Yes.
Alan Brown.
Yes.
Richard Wallace.
Hi.
Scott Edmund.
Yes.
Kevin Clark.
Hi.
Also vote to close. Next item on our agenda is Hubbard Road LLC. That's not right.
They're coming up.
It's sorry, it's Horton Group, three fifty Goose Lane.
Yes.
Map seventy-five lot one oh one, zone MU slash C three site plan review for additional landscaping to fulfill landscaping requirements. Is someone here to present on behalf of the Horton Group? Anyone? Do you want?
So, Mr. Mr. Chairman, they, they have submitted a proposed bond, performance bond for the landscaping. And we were in receipt of an email from Kevin McGee, environmental planner, indicating that he was okay with the revised landscaping plan, basically on the condition that, that a performance bond be posted.
Okay, um, do we, not that, I mean, we take Kevin for his word. Would someone like to read in Kevin's mail? Scott or Sean, you got it?
I don't, I don't have it.
How about you, Scott?
Yep, this is to Guilford dated February first, twenty twenty-two to Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission from Kevin McGee, environmental planner, RE Horton Group, three fifty Goose Lane, Guilford, Connecticut, oh, six, four, three, seven, assessment map seventy-five lot one oh one. The Horton Group is looking to revise their landscaping plan that was approved in twenty-ten. As part of the development of the project, trees which were noted as to remain were removed. And trees that were shown to be installed and planted parking aisles were not installed due to design changes. The revised landscaping plan addresses the design changes to the property and provides for the relocation of the trees due to design changes. Due to the need for a final certificate of occupancy for the property, a landscaping bond will need to be need to be provided to ensure the planting of the trees this spring.
Okay, um, so we don't really know what the, the, the changes are with respect to the original plan versus the current plan. But they seem to be okay with Kevin McGee. And it seems to me that Kevin's okay with it and he's usually pretty hard about these things.
Oh, but do, do we know that they've secured a performance bond?
We have, we have not received one yet, but the idea is, and I forwarded a draft motion that we would receive the performance bond before the issuance of a final certificate of occupancy on this building.
John, can we just make our approval subject to receipt thereof?
Yep.
Fine. There is no written motion. So who's going to?
There is.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion?
Sure. Voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a site plan application for a revised landscape plan for the Horton Group LLC at three fifty Goose Lane, map seventy-five lot one oh one, as shown on in quotations, three fifty Goose Lane Landscape slash Wetland Plan LW one, end quote, dated nine four twenty-ten by TEC Landscape Design Incorporated, with the latest revision date of eleven, twelve, twenty twenty-one. This application is approved based on the finding that it conforms with the zoning code and with the condition that prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy, a landscape performance bond in the amount of eight thousand four hundred dollars be posted in a form acceptable to the town planner.
Second. Thank you very much. Discussion? Any problems? I mean, this is the way we should be doing things from now on. If, if there's going to be proposed landscaping, we should be collecting a bond for that. Because we've been burned and.
Yeah. I completely agree.
My comments, Dan, I know that we can't require them to put in the landscaping first, but we should really strongly prefer that they do that.
Right. I mean, especially with respect to like the, the property on State Street. I mean, one of our responsibilities is do our best to protect the neighbors, you know, to the degree possible, when we're going to be allowing a development like this. So we, any other discussion on that?
Yeah, Phil, this is Jamie. My reading of this particular application is that they had promised to do so, but did it, did not do so. So we're sort of catching it now at the time before a certificate of occupancy is issued. So it's a little bit of, you know, we can ask and they can say, sure. And, and then it may fall through, you know, to twelve years later with this particular proposal. And I, I know that we have a few more in front of us that this is also the case, but.
Do we, do we want to put a time stamp on when this should be completed by before execution of the bond?
I think it's a good question for John. I mean, you know, do, are there other precedents where you know, other towns require the bond upfront or do they typically wait for this sort of like, you didn't do what you said you were going to do and now you're not going to get.
Well, in the reality.
I want to reiterate, I want to reiterate what I said before. I had to post a bond. When the work was completed, it didn't matter. I had to wait three years and the zoning enforcement, which was Reggie Reed at the time, came out, verified that I did it before they released my passbook or my bond. I don't see why we can't do it because like I said.
Well, I mean, I, I guess my, my, my statement is, you know, if everything's done and the only thing we're waiting for is the installation of the, the the plantings, you know, in theory, that can be done anytime from like April to July.
But they don't get the, they don't get the bomb release until it's all planted and.
Correct. Agreed. And the question is, you know, before we say we're gonna, you know, pierce the bond and cash the bond and do it ourselves, do we want to give an X date? We want to say, you know, we're only going to wait till this time. And then they'll execute the bond. I don't.
I, I, I think that's reasonable and I, I, I do take board, although I, I don't have a sense of how practical it is of Scott's comment about, you know, particularly as, as far as you know, buffering between neighbors. Scott coming about getting it done before you break ground, just.
Most of the time that doesn't work unfortunately because the machinery and the equipment going in.
Yeah, they also, also just the money. They don't want to do that. They want to do it at the end. Like, so I, I understand, as a builder myself, I understand that that's not going to happen, but.
Yeah, but, but, but if they can't, but if they can't do it based on construction constraints or whatever.
Timing, weather.
Yeah, of course, of course, but a performance bond should be a standard practice. It, it should, you know, just based on our past experience. You know.
So. John, go ahead.
So yeah, Mr. Chairman, and it's, it's basically in response to Jamie's question. Yeah, I mean, any, anytime you have a, a project like that, you know, a special permit, residential development subdivision, things like that, where there is a public improvement, certainly if you're building a new town road or something like that, you'd need a bond. But anytime there is a, an improvement that is meant to affect or, or buffer, you know, impacts to the neighbors, you'll want to make sure that that's, that that will happen. And so bonding for all this sort of thing, whether it's a road or landscaping should be basically upfront as part of the original approval.
Yeah, I, I guess the question is, do we want to put a, a time? I mean, you can have a bond, but if it doesn't have like a note saying this must be completed by X date. We'll, we'll get stuck into it.
So the, the purpose of, the purpose of the bond is to guarantee that the work gets done. And if, if the builder, you know, walks away from the project after fifty percent, that, that bond money is a place.
The job, we, we have a project that's been ongoing for ten years. Yeah.
So. And they don't walk away and they don't do it.
Well, so then it's a matter of you can vote to call the bond and, and to, you know, to put in the, put in the landscaping yourself.
Okay, so. I think what we have. I'm not as concerned about this project because I think they want to get their certificate of occupancy and I think they want to get this completed. If we have a motion to approve, would someone like to make a second on that? We did have a second because we're discussing. Are we, are we good on a discussion on this one?
I wanted to say one thing about that, about the plantings here. You don't want to try to lock something in and then for some reason, like if you're planting a particular a, a bush or a tree or something like that. And the weather screws it up or something like that and it gets beyond the time that you're, the guy is able to do it. Let's say he's going to have it done by September, but September got cold and you can't plant certain trees without them dying. So you got to take a little consideration for that. No, I, I agree that if a guy goes ten years past the time, that's, that's definitely wrong. But you got to be a little careful with the guy that's building this project too. We got to look out for him as well as the surrounding houses and stuff.
Yeah, and I would, I would, I would take into consideration the fact that, that they basically violated their design plan originally by taking out a bunch of trees they said would remain. So I think we can hold them to a little bit of a higher standard in terms of getting this one done. And they want, they want to get it done and it's a very responsible developer. And they want to get their CO and I think we want to help them in any way we can get this done.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Can you give me some details on the bond, the type of bond you're going to require and maybe the dollar amount for the minutes?
The dollar amount was eight thousand four hundred.
And, and.
It's, it's, it's in the motion.
And, and John, if you could, uh, help Lisa describe.
Is it in the motion?
It's in the.
The dollar amount is.
In front of me.
Yep.
Okay.
It just calls it a performance bond. I don't know.
Okay. And then the second question is, I don't have anything for the minutes because there's nobody presenting. There's no testimony. What do you suggest I do?
I, I think you could just say that the interim planner, you know, presented that the, of, of landscape estimate was presented by the applicant.
Okay.
While and, and note Kevin McGee's memo.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? I'll call the vote then. All in favor, Sean Cosgrove.
Hi.
Frank DeAndrea.
Hi.
Jamie Stein.
Yes.
Alan Brown.
Yes.
Richard Wallace.
Yes.
Scott Edmund.
Yes.
Kevin Clark. Yep. I'll vote also. Great. We do not have any minutes. Else, we've got Hubbard Road has been requested to continue to March second, twenty twenty-two and Hubbard Road LLC. That's the second one. Also, would someone like to make a motion to continue that to March second? Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Call the vote, Sean Cosgrove.
Hi.
Frank DeAndrea.
Hi.
Jamie Stein.
Yes.
Alan Brown.
Yes.
Richard Wallace.
Yes.
Scott Edmund.
Yay.
Kevin Clark.
Hi.
I'll also vote to continue that. We have a request from a very needy applicant at fourteen eighty-six Boston Post Road LLC who would like to also continue the public, to set the public hearing for two sixteen twenty-two. Frank, you need to recuse yourself on this.
I am, did we do that last week though?
They said public hearing for two sixteen.
I think this is the FYI.
Okay, that's an FYI. We don't even devote on it. So Frank. Uh, we don't have the minutes. We do have other commission business and that is to appoint John Gisowski and Steve Natuck as acting zoning enforcement officers. They believe they've been appointed. So it's really not up to us, is it?
No, actually it is. It needs to be up to you because the, the commission is the entity responsible for enforcement of its own regulations. So you must appoint your officer.
Well, I will tell the commission in my brief dealings with John, he has been very efficient and very accurate in his delivery of information to me. So my recommendation would be that the commission approve this appointment.
So punish me for my efficiency, but.
But I just have one question. Is it in, is it indefinite or just until we hire a permanent CEO?
I think I, I think we'll act, we'll act until replaced, until you appoint someone else.
Okay.
I believe they are retained on a contract basis from the town. And, and so their services are no longer required because we have staff up and running that are up to speed.
So just so I, John, where are you located?
Right now I'm located in Pomfert, Connecticut, in my home. My, my, okay, go ahead.
And, and so I'm just wondering how you operate. Do you operate as a, as a CEO in other towns too?
I sure do. Yeah.
All right. And so are you alerted to violations by town personnel or citizenry or what, what happens?
That's, yeah, that's generally the way it happens. Um, given, especially given, you know, limitations of time and space and geography, where we don't do regular patrols, you know, with a, with a searchlight looking for zoning violations. We tend to be, we tend to be responsive. You know, and so two things, you know, in terms of enforcement, we tend to be responsive and we've had complaints that come into the office and Lisa and I have gone through them. And, and we'll, you know, deal with them as, as warranted. And the second is, uh, part of zoning enforcement is to review standard administrative permits. So when someone gets a building permit for a deck or an addition or a pool or, you know, actually currently about, you know, ten thousand generators. It, it comes through the process and we review it on a zoning basis. So those are standard applications that we review every day with, through an online system called Munis. So yeah, and, and then answering questions from the public about, hey, what's my setback and, and stuff like that. And we, you know, we, so we do that. We, we're, we're doing regular office hours at Guilford Town Hall South and then are all. at Guilford Town Hall South and then are also available by email, cell phone, Zoom, blah, blah, blah.
You know, I'm, I'm asking just so for anyone among the public that takes the time to, you know, watch online or, you know, review after the fact that, you know, we're covering the bases as far as zoning enforcement. Why ask the question? Thank you.
So our, our, our statement would be, we encourage all residents of Guilford to please don't break any zoning laws.
So would, would someone like to make a motion to appoint?
Wait, I'm sorry. I just have a question. Who's Steve?
Uh, Steve is my associate. He is a, an experienced zoning officer who is joining my firm from the town of Newtown where he was their zoning officer. Uh, and so he is jumping over to the consulting world as of next week and will be helping in Guilford.
Terrific. So we got a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you Scott. You just, you nipped Richard there just briefly. Sean Cosgrove.
Aye.
Frank DeAndrea.
Yay.
Jamie Stein.
Yes.
Alan Brown.
Yes.
Richard Wallace.
Yes.
Scott Edmund.
Yay.
Kevin Clark. Kevin, you good with this? Give me a thumbs up. There you go. Thanks bud. One other thing I wanted to bring up, there were some comments that were forwarded in after our zoning meeting regarding some changes whether intended or unintended from the zoning code rewrite. And I would like to request if there are individuals that would be interested in reviewing some of those for our greater benefit and maybe reforming a zoning code committee. As opposed to, so I, for example, I sent out a memo which I am very happy that none of you replied to me on because I certainly don't want any ex parte communications on stuff like this. But, but I do think it's important that uh, we look at this and, and understand the implications of some of the comments that have been made. And I would very much like to see two or three or four of you be willing to spend some time. Scott, you're always very good on the catch and stuff. Would you do it? Would you help?
Sure.
Thank you very much. Help me out. Frank, you want in? Jamie, you want it? Jamie, you might be a little busy in the near future, but I mean, I'm happy to help as well. Sean, would you be helped? Would you be willing?
I could, I could help. And I think Jamie, as far as planning is concerned, it might be a good idea.
Yeah, I think Scott, Sean and Jamie are the best choices for this job.
You know, it's something, I'm not even going to make a motion. I make a motion to just draft them. So this is like, you know, conscription and I appreciate it. And it's, guess what? It's to all of our benefits. So I appreciate your willingness and I'll see, I will forward you and, and maybe John can help me forward some of the comments and concerns raised by one of our local developers about some of the profile. And I, I, we've brought up some of the ones in the past. In, you know, drive-throughs as well as some density changes as well as the one I forwarded to you all regarding the deletion of, or, or the non-inclusion of some wetland and flood areas in the buildable lot. That's, that's, that's a real big change that, you know, in a shoreline community has some real impacts. So I look forward to working with you on that. With that said, and with no further business before the Planning and Zoning Commission, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank, I got, I got Sean and then I got Frank. By a show of hands, I call the vote. All in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Yay.
Thanks guys. I appreciate all your help tonight. See you in a couple weeks.
Thank you, John. Thank you.